To order. We will now recite the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to remind everyone that in board docs, the clerks have uploaded research and articles compiled by board members, including some on Governor Hokel's forthcoming decision regarding state legislation on cellphone usage in schools. This information is available for review both by board members and the community. While the timeline for the governor's decision is still pending, we will remain vigilant and keep the community informed of any announcements that may affect our policy. So the first order of business is the approval of the agenda. I'll accept a motion to approve the August 28th, 2024 agenda presented before us. May I have a motion? So moved. Thank you, Board Member Amanda. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Board Member Vivian. Any discussion, additions or corrections? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion to accept the August 28th, 2024 meeting agenda carries. Tonight's meeting will run for thirty minutes due to a pre-scheduled board retreat. We will review and provide feedback on two cellphone policies presented as first read. Please note that we will not be voting on the policies tonight as we need additional time for discussion. The policy committee will meet on September 3rd, 2024 to incorporate our feedback and revise the policies as needed. If the committee is ready to present the final version to the board after that meeting, we may schedule a special meeting to vote on the policy. The outcome of the policy committee meeting on the 3rd will determine next steps. Our goal is to determine the approach that best supports our students, staff and families and to make a timely, informed decision. Let's start our meeting by welcoming Superintendent David Blanchard from Sch- from Schenectady Central School District. Sue, I was about to say Schenectady. Superintendent Blanchard will provide valuable insights and firsthand experience on the use of yonder pouches, which will inform our discussion and help us assess their potential impact. Thank you Superintendent Blanchard for joining us tonight and providing your informative perspective.
Thank you. It's my, my pleasure to be here. Thank you for welcoming. I, I know I'm dressed a little bit casual for school superintendent. I hope, um, no offense is taken, so, but it, but it hopefully will help kind of relax this very, uh, you know, significant issue that we have in our society with regard to the level of distraction that kids present when they come into our schools. So about, uh, three years ago now, Schenectady, uh, when kids came back to school from the pandemic, we noticed a very different learning environment. And so kids, uh, with earbuds in, kids, uh, really, uh, chronic issues on their cellphones. And as a district, we had a no cellphone policy. Essentially what that looked like was, uh, during class, kids were not to have their cellphones out. In essence, what that meant in reality was for our teachers, nine periods a day, five days a week, a hundred and eighty days, teachers were fighting over cellphones. We had our, our, um, district, uh, leadership teams got together. We had parents that were talking about this issue. We had teachers really concerned about trying to deliver instruction. I had one teacher come to me, a very veteran teacher, trying to retire early because she taught calculus and she said, "I can't do it anymore." In essence, uh, students in calc class saying, "I learned better with my earbuds in." Um, we knew we had a really significant issue and, and something to grapple with. What, um, our approach was, uh, after some discussion, through our building leadership team and district leadership team, we started looking at yonder as, as an option. Now, going back three years ago, yonder was just used in, um, you know, comedy shows and things like that. And I, I brought this so that you can kind of see what it, what the pouches look like and you can kind of, if you put your phone in there and lock it, this will unlock it, but you can kind of get a sense for what this is. But, um, in essence, we visited a school district, uh, Chickapie High School in Massachusetts, who had implemented in March. We went in May, so they had just implemented. Schenectady is a very small high school, so Schenectady is a district, small rural school district. I've been the superintendent there ten years. The building principal had been there at the time, seven years. So we knew like we had the right team to try to make this very dramatic change of a distraction-free school environment. When we saw Chickapie, we went with, uh, board members, we went with a couple of teachers, myself and the principal. We left there saying, "This is a hill to die on." Because what we saw was a school climate like, um, that brought back memories of what it was like for, for me, an old guy, to be in school. Kids talking to each other, kids socializing, kids working through problems, not trying to use their, their, um, their cellphones or social media to help resolve conflict. We saw a really positive school climate. So we held a couple of public forums. We got our teeth kicked in because that's how this works. This is really hard, hard to accomplish, especially going back, you know, years ago. Um, our parents were not in agreement, but we had already had a policy, no cellphones in class. We just had an enforcement issue. So we essentially determined that as an administrative team, we were going to go to yonder. And much to our surprise, we implemented, this'll start our third year with yonder, but the day one, hour one that we implemented, and the approach that we took was, okay, kids are gonna come in, yonder's there with us. They're gonna put their, they're gonna get their pouch, they're gonna go to their homerooms, they're gonna decorate their pouches, and then, um, come back the next day and phones are gonna be locked away. When kids walked through and we handed them the pouch, they put their phones in, classed it and went to class. We were like, whoa, that's not what we were expecting. We were expecting, you know, a, a much harder implementation. That first day, we saw kids socializing, kids talking to each other, kids engaged with each other. And we saw, um, our school, uh, counselors inundated with kids saying, "If I can't have my cellphone, I might as well be in elective courses." So we saw an increase in our elective courses. And then throughout those first couple of weeks, we saw our school counselors inundate with kids that did not know how to resolve conflict. So the, our school counselors, our mental health counselors were like, whoa, our kids do not know how to talk to each other. What we also saw very quickly is the parents that were like, "You can't do this. It's not safe. It doesn't make sense." Um, we pay for these cellphones, you don't. Are you gonna pay the bills? All this stuff that I heard all went away. I get thank you, like lot, lots of thank yous. So now I'm on a, like, yonder should be paying me. Because I'm on a crusade to, to make it clear that, that we are not raising healthy kids because of the amount of time that they spend on screens. And it occurs in school and teachers cannot control it by themselves, administrators can't control it by themselves. But this idea that what we created in a distraction-free environment, no earphones, no, um, no smartwatches, no, no earbuds, no smartwatches, no cellphones. And, and to say that every kid locks their phone away in the pouch, we don't even care about that anymore. Because year three, they just know the expectation, the teachers, the administration, we hold hands on this. And we don't see cellphones during the course of the school day. So it's a much healthier school climate to teach in, to work in. And it's, I said earlier, parents are thanking us. Well, you can imagine how much easier it is when you, when you're trying to parent a child with a cellphone and the school set the tone. And it said enough. Now when the child's home and the parent's struggling, they're used to putting them away. And I'll give you one other example. I know I only have ten minutes, so I'm trying to talk really fast. We brought a group of kids to Proctor's year one. When kids are out of the building, they have their cellphones. So my music teacher came back to me with, "You wouldn't believe what I saw." And I'm like, "What'd you see?" Our kids, you know, we have like fifty kids in, in Proctor's. We're sitting in the center of the building. None of our kids, the whole time we were there, took out their phones. Look, all around the, the room and, and eight other school districts there, kids are on their cellphone, distracted the whole time. This summer, I went to a BOSI's program, this is just a week or two ago, um, to see our kids in summer school. We had seven Schenectady kids. Um, there was like, you know, five districts in Schenectady County sent to the same BOSI's program. And the principal and I are looking around the room and our seven kids never took their phones out. And I'm wa- and they, they don't use yonder. And I'm watching the rest of the room and kids have their phones like it's nothing. You know, during, while they're supposed to be learning. And these are kids that, that haven't been successful academically, that need all the support they can get. So I'm, what I gave you as far as handouts that you can kind of peruse at your convenience, there's our, um, essentially policy guidelines. You're gonna see disciplinary consequences. You're gonna see, um, in essence, how yonder works. The, um, you know, I, I was in Waterville School District a couple of weeks ago doing a public forum with them and, and schools out in the Utica area, and they gave me like an hour to do this. So I'm trying very quickly to fit everything in. But ultimately, um, yonder's the tool. And by just setting a policy that says, "We're not going to allow cellphones in school," is very hard for the teachers, very hard for the administrators to manage. So we, we in Schenectady needed the tool. Now, that, that could be different in each school district. But as a society, we have a huge problem with student mental health. And it's all connected to social media apps, the addiction of social media. I'm trying to manage, kids trying to manage the technology. So there's a book, um, that's on the bestseller list. And if you haven't read it, haven't seen it, it's, it's a must-read if you have anything to do with working with kids in school. And The Anxious Generation gives you a guide, gives you practice, but it's written by a social psychologist. And I, I, I didn't talk much about my background. I was a school psychologist, um, in the Gloriusville City School District before being a princ- becoming a principal in the Greater Johnson School District and then Boston Spa, um, before superintendency. So mental hea- you know, connecting mental health with, um, with what's happened in our society with regard to smartphones is really important to me. So I'm, I'm trying to, you know, be out there as much as I can. I'm trying to get people to understand this correlation is, there's a one-to-one correlation with the increase in mental health. Uh, this author does a great job of describing that. And then the, uh, the only thing I want to add is Schenectady paired, um, the cellphone ban or distraction-free environment with creating a positive school climate. So we increased intermurals for junior high school kids. We increased our intermurals for, um, our high school kids. We made the, the, um, the school cafeteria. We created a kind of a rec area with a, a pin, a foosball table, air hockey table, a bunch of pinball games. And then all of our clubs, outdoor adventure club, skeet club, we created so many clubs to try to reconnect kids. So it wasn't just, "We're taking your phones." It was, "We're taking your phones, but we're also giving you ways to connect outdoor adventure club, hiking, all sorts of opportunities that kids could, um, engage in so that they're, uh, more mentally healthy at the end of the day." Very, very quick.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Today, I'm gonna ask the board for about five minutes if anyone has any questions that they would like to ask Superintendent Blanchard.
I have three questions.
Board Member Vivian?
So question number one, have you noticed an impact on bullying in the schools? Look, can you give us an idea what it looked like before and after cellphone ban?
Yeah. So like physical altercations went from, uh, concerning to nonexistent. So what happens in essence, when kids don't have, when they don't have access to their phones, they're no longer taping fights. They're no longer like all the TikTok trends that we were seeing three years ago. Um, you know, capturing people's feet under the stalls and then messaging other, their friends. When nobody has access to their phone, there's no pressure to then be like, um, you know, to, to try to get the next message out or it just, nobody in the school has their cellphone. So when our students talk about this, they talk about feeling, um, re- kind of this relief of, one, who are my friends? They're realizing their friends aren't the kids that live in Schenectady that they're, they, they message or they have on social media. Their friends are the kids that they go to school with, that they can socialize and engage with. So now that's created more dialogue. They're not trying to work out problems, uh, on a messaging app. It's impossible to resolve conflict on a cellphone. So once kids start talking, you know, our, our like really significant behavior problems declined. Direct, all of our referrals declined except for that first year, we had about sixty infractions with the cellphone. So, so we saw a spike in referrals, but it wasn't the aggressive stuff or the hard, challenging issues. It was, okay, you, you, you didn't put your phone in the pouch and you had it out. And there were about sixty of those in that first year.
Um, thank you so much for that and that's incredible. So second?
Can I just elaborate? You can't miss it. So we, we've had twenty school districts come visit us. And when, if Schenectady wanted to come visit, I would say anybody you want to talk to, speak to them. Any student, any staff member. So I say the same thing every time a district comes to visit. Stop anybody. And you're gonna hear kids say, "Well, we think the bad kids should not have their cellphones, but if you're not a bad kid..." And I'm like, "There are no bad kids here. We, we all have issues with our cellphones." So, um, the fact that when you walk through our halls, you see a different climate. You know, you see kids in the classroom, looking at the teachers, engaged in learning, which wasn't happening three years ago.
Then I'll just ask one more question because you kind of answered my second, last question. Your overall test scores before and after and your overall reading and math level, the grade level deficits before and after? Have you seen an improvement?
Yeah, so the, in, in this book, he really tackles that issue of how, how the academics and, and how we'll see change over time as a result of, um, trying to create health, more mentally healthy children and, and eliminating screen time. What I want to say with regard to academics is it's very hard for us to measure, given the region standards, state test score standards, the bar keeps changing. So, so it's not fair for me to try to, or I wouldn't appropriately be able to articulate, okay, we're seeing this. We're, our graduation rate's always been about ninety percent. So, um, so we're still like ninety percent. But, um, but the actual, like, our region scores, um, you know, we struggled in chemistry this year. We usually don't struggle in chemistry, but there were changes to the regions. So it's, so it becomes really hard for me to put a finger on that. And I think our community does not value the state assessments. We, we, um, it's just not our strength.
Fair enough. Thank you. Thank you. And I'm going to pause here actually. I apologize, um, because we have to turn to the po- um, the policy conversation. But I hope that we can invite you back if some of the folks have questions.
I'll, I'll come anytime.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much. We appreciate you coming. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, now I'll turn the meeting over to Vice President and Policy Committee Chair, thank you, Nohalani, who will lead our fifteen minutes or so discussion on the first read of the policies, focusing specifically on the content rather than on the implementation. Before we proceed, I'll read our meeting work agreements. Just a reminder, maintain a focus on what's best for our students. One mic, one voice. Create a safe space for all views to be expressed and treating everyone with kindness, courtesy and respect. And commit to effective deliberation by listening with an open mind and allowing others to express their views if we, if you disagree.
All right, so everyone should have received both, uh, versions of the, um, head policies, the electronic device, personal electronic device policies. Uh, one involves a receptacle, the other does not. Um, and we wanted to bring these forward as a first read, so they are presented in, um, in front of you if you have any questions. But I wanted to take the next eleven, ten to eleven minutes, um, to discuss anything that you want to change, alter, add, any discussion that you may have. Um, I'd like to open it up and Alexandria, if you don't mind, I'd like to start with you.
No questions.
And we don't have to go around, but if anyone has anything in particular. Board Member Jamaica?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so a, a couple of things, um, after our, our meeting and reading it several times. Um, one of the pieces we talked about is having clarity even just with the policy we already have, right? Um, and Board Member Vivian brought up some, some great points about, you know, it not being completely clear, which is why we adjusted it, tried to add bullet points and, and things like that. But one of the spaces that I think, um, needs more clarity or to change is under level F, we say in the second sentence, "If applicable, actions may be referred to law enforcement." And I feel as if that placement there may not be the best place for that statement. I know then it would be also reflected in the other one. Um, because there are very specific reasons why it would be referred to law enforcement. And some of those are actually mentioned in letter C, right? When we talk about, um, sharing of explicit, um, messages or, or emails and, and those things or recording someone during expected privacy moments. Um, I think that we need some clarity and to decide if really that's the best placement for that sentence or if we need even a separate bullet to be able to be really clear about when we would contact law enforcement, um, as opposed to just, if applicable, um, because there are very specific circumstances to which that would happen. Um, that was that. And then I can't find it now, looking at it, but I feel as if in the one that talks about the possible pouches, um, we do a better explanation about tiered interventions. Um, and so that piece of, you know, again, referring back to Board Member Vivian, us being really clear about what it looks like when we say tiered interventions so that it's, it's really clear for anyone that reads the policy. Uh, and then third and, and last thing at this moment is in the one that talks about, um, the, the pouches and that we are going to not just police our students, but we're also going to police the adults in the building. Um, it even includes consultants at some level because it says, "Any adult that would be in the building for a week or more." Which means, if I'm reading this correctly, we are saying that anyone we contract with, they're going to sign some document or understand that because you're in our building, you have to follow this policy regarding your cellphone use because you're here for more than a week. Just, um, okay, seems like a lot. Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so I, I'm not, I am going to look at the policy with the receptacles. Okay, so a few things, um, and many, much of the, and I know all of you looked at it, but much of it is the same except that the language is a little bit different. So if you take a look, and I just wanted to, um, talk about number one where it says cellphone policy, a village approach, because I think that's important, that all of us are being part of this, that it's not, and I think Superintendent Blanchard, he really, when he talked about the fact that a lot of the onus was put on teachers and/or, um, administrators, I think it's important for us, including the board, to know that we are part of this process, whatever the process will be. So again, I'm just looking at the receptacle one. I'm not looking at the current because personally with me, the current is not gonna fly for me. So I'm looking at the receptacle. The reason why we, um, I use receptacles, we're not sure what we're gonna use, whether it's a pouch or something else. Um, the other thing too, in terms of, uh, the, well, not the guidelines, but in terms of the responsibilities for the, um, personal electronic devices, number three, it's broken down by different stakeholders, so students, staff, and this is what Jamaica's referring to, students, staff, substitute teachers. And again, this is a draft, so it can be changed, parents. But my feeling around this was that so everyone is clear on what their role is when it comes to the cellphone use. In terms of the visitors, we can change that. But I'm thinking if we do have someone who is going to be working with the school district for a long period of time, that my, my feeling is that they should also adhere to our policy. Um, it may not be a week. We can change that, but I do think it's important. I also feel that the responsi- the responsibilities for, um, personal electronic devices really talks about the village. Because it's not just about the kids, the kids that have to adhere to this. This is everyone that's part of the village of the Schenectady School District. So that was part of the, um, the rationale for that. I do, uh, I do agree though, and again, this is separate from, well, I'll stick with the policy. The other piece too, there is a piece on substitutes, a number two, and I'll just, from a personal experience, when I started at Schenectady, I was a substitute teacher and I had no idea about anything, right? Because you come into a building, sometimes you get a folder, sometimes you don't. So that was intentional. So when substitute, substitutes come in, they also know what our processes are. And it shouldn't be just for cellphones. It was, it's with everything else. So that was the rationale around that. In terms of policing, for me, I don't see it as policing. I see it as kind of like, um, having everyone have a certain expectation. And again, we haven't agreed if it's gonna be the yonder pouches. We have no idea what it's gonna be. But I think it's a way of showing again that the village has expectations and we're all, not just the students, that we're all going to follow those expectations. And I'll pause in sorry because I know other people have things to say.
Yeah, that's fine.
Just one thing food for thought. I know this is more on the implementation side, but I want Dr. Koro, Joe, for you guys to consider, if we were to end up going with the pouches. Um, I know that if teachers were to be expected to police the usage of phone in the classroom, you're likely not going to get much buy-in from the teachers. From a teacher perspective, I believe what would be the preferred method is, please put your phone away. Oh, you wanna put your phone away? Please go to the admin office. Oh, you don't wanna go to your admin office? I'm gonna call for an escort. No referral, no fighting. It's one and done. And then the admin determines whether or not there's even gonna be a consequence. So there's still the opportunity for a tiered approach, but there isn't so much of an expectation on the teacher to try and discipline the student over a cellphone. They're given, they're just able to teach the class, which is what they want to do, is teach the class.
I think we would put that into the, of the procedures that we would put in after we adopted the policy.
Bernice, to your point, I'd love to see the cellphone policy village approach in our updated version. I, I think that any version, that makes a whole lot of sense. Um, and we've been very much talking about the importance of relationships and, um, teachers with students and building those relationships and how we have done such a really good job, um, I would say over the last decade of really building, um, a, a much more positive environment and really fostering that relationship importance, students to teachers, teachers to teachers, admins to teachers. Um, and while our teachers come here to teach, we just heard a whole bunch of kids tell us the most important thing is that relationship. That relationship is teachers being able to talk to students about whatever it is. That classroom management is relationships. That's, that's par for the course. And I don't think there's a teacher that would disagree. Um, so we already know we have an implementation problem. And so we need to be able to make sure teachers are aware of the policy as it currently stands and whatever it will be. Um, and we have a code of conduct that already exists that has a tiered approach. Um, that is about the village and that the current policy and code of conduct says, um, it is a level one infraction. And there are possible things that teachers can do and it's based on relationship and how to be supportive and teaching children about their behaviors. Um, so I do hope that, um, our current policy gets to be updated and implemented before we make any harsh changes. Because it's been said multiple times, we don't have data to say we have a bad policy because the policy was never implemented. So how could we change something if we don't know whether or not what we have could actually already work?
Um, I was gonna say something else, but in response to what Jamaica just said, I think a big part of it is the fact that, uh, it's falling on the teachers to, um, it like, you know, we don't like to use the word like enforce or police, like those sound harsh. But right now, it's falling on the teachers. Like it's, it's classroom by classrooms and, you know, the teachers, they wanna teach. Um, so if they have to start like telling every single student who, you know, might have their phone out, that takes away from class time and, you know, they just wanna, you know, try to power through, teach the kids who are listening. I'm speculating, but this is kind of like what it, it seems like in my mind. So, um, it's hard to, maybe the, the issue is the fact that because it's falling on the teachers to, you know, follow through with this policy, that's why it's not working. Because there was, there was never any like backup or, or whatever the case may be. Because there was, there was never any like backup or, or whatever the case may be. Um, they needed, it sounds like they need some type of tool. We have those receptacle, receptacle boxes at the front of the, uh, classrooms now, so I've heard. So, I mean, maybe procedure-wise, until we come up with a hard and fast plan, um, is to utilize those, I don't know. But, the one question that I had about the two policies is the difference between using like a receptacle, the receptacle policy and then the non-receptacle policy, is that students in the non-receptacle policy would be able to use their phones at lunchtime. And, that seems a little like backtracky for me, I know that's not really like a word, uh, but, it really needs to be like an all or nothing type of thing. Like to let them have their cellphone during lunchtime, you know, opening up the can for, you know, the cyberbullying, um, kids bringing it to the bathroom, i- it's, it's hard to think if we rely on anyone, I mean, really, like myself included, to just like keep their phone in their pocket or their purse all day long, it's hard not to get tempted and pull it out and, you know, get distracted. Um, so to have like a specific place where the phones go, whether it's the pouches or the, a box at the school entrance, I don't know. Um, it really needs to be like an all-day thing, letting them have it at lunch just seems like you're crossing, yeah, like you're, it's a burden, it's a little-
Yeah, cause in the afternoon, teachers are just gonna have to deal with the headache, and getting them to put their phones back in their pouches, and it just undoes everything that might have been accomplished in the first half of the day.
Well, it's a different, it's, it's the different policies, the, in, in the receptacle one, it's all day, they're in there all day long. But in the other one, it says that they can use them during lunchtime, um-
The high school students.
Yeah, the high school students. Um, which at that point, it, that's another thing too, like, what, I have a hard time thinking like, what difference does it make, um, letting the high school students first elementary school or middle school students? Like it really should be consistent and be all day or, you know, cause, oh, this is the point I was gonna make earlier, sorry, I know we're cutting, uh, close on time here. But, it is like the school's job to protect the kids during the school day, whether it's, you know, from physical harm with altercations, and, but also, like, we focus a lot on mental health. So, unless there's someone who can like monitor what kids are looking at on their phone all day long, it's hard to say that they're looking at things that are going to, like, help them and, and help them learn. Um, there's a lot of things on the internet that are just not good for a, a child's mind, or a student's mind, a developing mind. So, if we're not able to really make sure and sort of be the parent in that situation, and make sure that the kids aren't looking at something harmful or doing something harmful with their phone, then we need to make sure that those phones are put away so that they can't cause any harm.
So, I appreciate all of the discussion. Unfortunately, that's the last, um, uh, the last statement that we'll be able to take, we're a little bit over. So, my only ask at this point is just if there is anything additional, anything at all, please send it to me by Friday, um, end of business or close of business Friday. Um, the policy committee will reconvene on September third, we'll kinda circle back. Um, but I do appreciate everybody's feedback and everything that you've all shared, and, um, you know, we're gonna continue to work on this so that we can get something out.
And at this time, I will adjourn the special meeting. The meeting's adjourned, have a good evening, everyone.